Good morning and welcome to the September 29 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We will be given the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our regular business, we will take a moment of silence to remember all of our troops serving abroad and those serving at home as well, and those serving in the middle of us. Okay, we had anticipated that we would have with us this morning a consultant, Mark Morse, who is with MMA Consulting Group, and we had asked him to prepare for us in a scope of services, if you will, a scope of work of how we might address the organizational assessment for the county. And Mark could make it here today, but he did provide us with a document. And I think Maggie is coming with a copy.
I think she has copies.
She's had copies, which is coming back with. And what we'll do is we'll take a few moments to read it, and then each of them, we can talk about it. The idea is, and it's really, this is good now, because now we have something, we have a scope of work that Maggie and I talked with him on the phone about this, and in terms of how we want to look at county government. Because if we want to make plans for the future, we need to look at what we're doing right now. I mean, you can't really move forward unless you know what's going on now and have some sense of the value of that service, the cost of that service, the benefit to all of the towns on the Cape. So what this is, is an outline based on the conversation that we had with him. And then, and then we can take a look at this and discuss it and decide how we might want to move forward.
Who was the "we"?
"We", the county commissioners.
Did we have a conversation with this guy?
Maggie and I had a conversation, yes.
Just to give him some background on what they're doing.
Okay, because I didn't remember meetings.
No, you haven't met him yet. You were supposed to meet him tonight, but you've probably met him before.
You've met him at some point.
Mark did our, Mark's the one who did the salary study that we did years and years and years ago with Bays. Yeah, it was a long time ago that we did the salary study. So he's done work for us. Yeah, and he's, you know, he's done a lot of stuff for us. So he's very familiar with kind of the public safety laws.
And more recently, he was the consultant for the lower Cape, the four towns, looking at combining, how they might combine public safety services. And he made a presentation to, what was it, Orleans, Wellfleet, Eastham, and Provo Town. Truro sort of backed out, I think, but those towns with him. So he has done that more recently. But he's, I'm sure you know him, he's been in the business for years and years.
And he's coming, is he coming, some in the future coming?
Well, once we look at this and decide what, how we want to move forward with this project, then we would bring him back, I think, and really talk to him in more detail about how the project could move forward.
Are we supposed to, are you suggesting we look at this now and make a judgment as to where to move forward?
No, I think, no, look at it now, we had a discussion about it.
Okay, so I need to read that.
You can have this copy, and Maggie's coming with the other copies.
Well, while we're waiting.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I just want to hand out the first meeting of the committee on, at Hock Committee on Vegetation Management, it's going to be Friday.
Yes, it is Friday.
Friday at nine o'clock. So here is the mission that you guys had previously put together and the list of members. And there's also a sample, I think, a sample letter in there that went out to all of the potential members. So you have that.
I have your copy a little bit in my office.
Did you make copies of the Mark Morse thing?
Yes, I have it right here.
So, that's just an FYI. These are all the people who agreed to participate. And don't be surprised if you get some indications that maybe there should be other people on there, but I thought that was the starting list. Otherwise it starts to get a little bit unwieldy. But I guess what I would recommend, Sheila, if you don't mind, is, I wouldn't adopt this yet. Let's go through the first meeting and then see how much feedback you get.
Absolutely.
And then if they want to amend it, then that's fine.
I mean, I think that that's, we need to have a discussion and then the group come to consensus of what do we think we can accomplish between now and the end of December.
Yeah, and if there's, and if there is some, you know, strong feedback and maybe a couple of, you know, people or entities or viewpoints are missing, we can bring it back.
Right.
So what's going to be the task for the first meeting?
Well, the way I'm looking at it is to really just bring people together to discuss the issue as it stands. Why we're bringing people together on this, since there's a lot of different voices with a lot of different concerns, all sort of acting on their own universe, and to bring those two, those groups together to address this. You know, the county has done everything it possibly can in regards to this issue. We used our full might, and even I met several times with members, you know, superiors at NSTAR to convince them that it was in everybody's interest to take this moratorium so that we could map the wellheads and identify them so to ensure, because there was a discrepancy once the mapping was done for Eastham, at the request of Eastham, from the NSTAR mapping and identification of wells in ours. So by being able to identify those wellheads, keep them from being directly sprayed and darkly affected by spraying, and having this moratorium, the county has used every tool it has to do its part in this. It really is now a legislative issue, and this is something that we have said over and over, that it is now time for the delegation to take up this issue and to at least look at how can they help towns gain the right to ban a certain practice if they wish to. I mean, it goes down to that level where the towns do not have the right to do it. It really is a state and legislative issue right now. So how can we look at, how can we look at this issue collectively? And how can we, as a group, come together and give a stronger voice to, is it good to give the towns that ability? I think it probably is. And what would be the alternatives if they did use it? What would that mean? What would that impact be on the economics of their town? Because what we have stated all along, NSTAR is only following the guidelines drawn up by the state. So they are not breaking the law, nor are landscapers, farmers, the national seashore, golf courses that use very similar chemicals or herbicides, or however the new word is to call them. And so if we, if there was a ban, what would that do for people who are relying on some of those things in their business? So I think what we have to do is, you know, how can we work with the state to impress upon them that more acceptable products can be used here on the Cape? And that way, we're all educated and we're all participating in this and not just identifying a public entity, because it's easy to look at a public entity and not at the overall picture. So that's kind of like the mission.
So is this an organizational meeting too, or you're going to chair?
Yeah, I'm going to chair this, and since we've called this together, and I think that, you know, we'll put that out there and people can come together and see how they want to proceed and do the agenda. I'm certainly not going to be the taskmaster, I don't have consensus on, on we have this many weeks, what can we accomplish and what is our goal?
And the plan is to meet every other week according to this?
I think that that's a doable, a doable, especially since it's only going to be really, what, eight, 12 weeks?
The charge says to report to you guys by December 31st.
31st, so we want to get, and you know, we'll ask the group how often can they meet? And how, how much do they think we can accomplish between a week or two weeks?
But certainly once a month won't be enough.
No, once a month is not enough. But I would say at least two times a month, if maybe not three.
Just for clarification, did I hear you say that you think it's probably a good idea if the town takes this over?
No, what I'm saying is that the towns do not have the ability to ban pesticides, individual towns. So is one of the solutions trying to file legislation to allow the towns to have that ability? And if they did, say that went through, what would be the impact on the economics of their town? What would that mean for the people who rely on those products for their own business? So I think that that has to be taken into consideration before, even if a town did have that ability, what would that mean to people in their area or overall?
Okay, but you're not suggesting that we're predisposing?
No, 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 no.
The, you know, the position that we're supporting the towns?
No, these are just all different alternatives that need to be addressed.
So going back to the tasks, this group is supposed to come up with an advisory recommendation to the three of us?
Well, to the three of us, and also a plan to go forward, I think, for the region. I mean, I think ultimately, it might even benefit the delegation at this point, because we have done everything we can. I mean, the delegation needs some might behind them to be able to push this issue and actually have an outcome, other than just standing there and, you know, pandering to the issue, what can we actually do about the issue? And it seems to me like a lot of people talk about it and talk about they don't want this, but nothing's actually getting done on the state level. So this is also to kind of push the delegation along in a direction that we find, if by consensus, acceptable.
In the beginning, when this first came up, there was, the issue was that a lot of the towns did not have the capacity or the capabilities to identify private wells.
Right.
Now, has that been done by the commissioners?
No, it's in the process of still doing, they're still in the process of doing it, and they hope to have that completed by December 31st as well. And I think 14 towns asked for it.
It's the Cape Guard Commission.
Cape Guard Commission. And they're doing that with AmeriCorps volunteers, and Tom Camereri is heading that effort with them. And they're literally walking those power lines with their GPS, their maps, and identifying wells and logging those in so that that can go to NSTAR. And NSTAR is being very cooperative too. They're, they're working with the commission and giving their maps and whatever information they have so that in the end, everybody has the proper information and the right mapping.
Okay, there was one question that Eastham had brought up about buffer zones, about so many feet from the well. Is that?
That's going to be identified in that mapping, so that they'll know how close they are to any individual wells. And to stay away from those.
Is there any attempt, as far as this organization, to support a position of buffer zones?
I'm not sure what they're going to come up with. I think that that's something that can be put in the discussion.
And do you, is this something that requires some vote?
No, it's just letting you know that the first meeting is finally taking place.
I was just saying, I would say you kind of endorse the concept, but to actually cement that in place right now, I think it's premature, pending kind of the first meeting or two of the group.
You'll be at that meeting?
On actually, Friday I have a conflict, so I've asked Kara to come to take the notes.
Two minutes, okay.
So she'll take the minutes.
Okay.
Where is this meeting going to take us?
In here.
Right here.
At nine o'clock on Friday.
Right, 11 o'clock? Nine o'clock, here in room 11.
I'm attending the municipal law seminar thing at the O.R.S. So yeah, I think it's a good start.
I do, well, finally, I mean, we should have done this last month, but.
Okay, Maggie, you want to?
I gave my copy to Bill of that.
Okay.
Right, I looked at it, I'm finding it.
There are three letters, or there should be four.
Why don't we just take, Sheila and I can take the copy.
I haven't seen it.
Aren't there four copies in what I have?
Yep. No, no, we have it here. Bill, this is, we can leave, I guess.
This is kind of an out of the, whether it was. Well, it's a scope of service.
Yeah, his proposal.
It's a, yeah, it's a proposal. So this is, I think this is exactly what we were looking for.
Well, I think it's.
I think it sums what we discussed with Mark, whether or not the three commissioners, you guys are on the same page, and then there's, we will have to get quotes, because this is over 5,000.
And I also.
Not an RFP, because it's under 25, but we'll have to get other quotes.
Well, I would like to, yeah, I mean, you know, Elizabeth Hude is back, and I would like to, I mean, if she's interested in doing a proposal on that.
She's an employee, she can't do that.
No, she can't. She's under contract already.
She can anticipate, but she's an employee. One thing I think is a little bit missing, I think we're on track with most of it, and I hate to use the word overlap, because then that suggests that we have two people doing the same thing that we don't need. But I think what, one thing that Mark might help with, prior to getting to kind of the next step of this whole process, is to identify places where there are similar functionalities, and there may be areas to improve, what's the word I want Maggie struggling? Yeah, efficiencies, but also, you know, symbiotic relationships. And you have kind of the Health Department and the Cape Guard Commission both working on water quality issues. So there's areas that may be symbiotic, maybe we can make it more efficient. Those, that's really, to me, what we're struggling with here a little bit. Mark, identify those areas that, I think we see a lot of them, but maybe there's some that he'll see.
Right, and I think that, I'm sorry, that discussion comes up quite a bit now that we're looking at, you know, the overall regional plan and waste, for wastewater, I mean, that's included. The Health Department comes in and, you know, this is where the Health Department will be needed, in this section, in that section. So there has to be that coordinated interchange between those departments.
So in his outcome, then, if I understand what I just heard, we would respond back and say, we just want to make sure that the outcome includes identification of areas of overlap within departments, and.
Without using that word.
Well, I think what you're looking for, you're looking.
That's another pejorative.
I think what you're looking for is identifying the degree of similarity and the delivery of services among the different departments.
That's pretty good.
What did you say?
Identify the degree of similarity or symbiotic, you know, I like the word symbiotic.
I don't want to be duplicating services with the number.
Yeah.
Among, you know, among the different departments. And I thought that that, when you develop both the profile of service delivery and you're reviewing, I think you were going to be in here, the developer profile of activities, that perhaps that would be the place to.
And you know what, maybe I'm prejudging. Maybe he should identify if there are areas that we're overlapping service delivery.
Right.
He should, maybe I can't see them.
Right, no, I think that we need to do that.
But what was the other word you used, Maggie?
I said identify areas of similarity slash overlap and layout. And this is my question, do you want recommendations for suggestions where efficiencies could occur to eliminate those?
I would say yes.
Well, are we, that's kind of the question, are we at that phase yet? This is, because he's sort of doing an inventory.
Right, this is not recommendations, right.
Well, one thing.
Then there's a second phase, I think, somewhere in there.
You wait until you get the recommendation before, you have to get the data in hand before you take a recommendation for elimination or change. I think, you know, I think this is a process.
So all of them.
And the first process is, and I think you spoke to this, about, this is the information gathering part of it. After we get the information in hand, I think at that point, we start to make some judgment as to what type of hypothesis we apply. And then after, after we do that, we have to test it in some way. And then after we test it, then it can come to some kind of a, you know, useful conclusion.
Because the other piece to that too is, and it's not part of his job necessarily in terms of identifying, but our job from the data is identifying services that we think could be reaching us, that.
Well, there's two parts. I think you spoke about.
Well, some already are.
Similarity of services, and then discover, you know, similarity of services, which ones can be expanded or extrapolated to be applied overall, over a larger, either demographic area or a larger, you know, service area.
Yeah, and also, I mean, I look at this as an opportunity for us to take a, you know, we're taking stock of where we are as a county, you know, where we've been, you know, what has the county done and represented, where we are, and what are we facing in the next 10 years? As far as the issues coming up, and are we in that position? I mean, are we, are our departments sufficiently staffed? Are they the correct departments? Do we have the right people in there to be addressing what's going to be coming down the pipe for us?
It's not necessarily the right people.
It's not, you know, but I'm saying with this, ultimately, I think this is where it will help us guide.
It is a bit of a strategic plan.
To restructure us.
Yeah, oh, it is.
It's going to be restructuring for the future.
It's the data gathering for a strategic plan for the future, is what it is.
Although, so Mark's task is going to tell you, this is what you got in the way it's put together right now. And here are some ideas about where maybe you have an overlap or places that can do more efficient delivery of service and maybe some symbiosis. And I think the second part that you guys were saying, well, what other regional.
Is not in here.
That's, and it shouldn't be, that may not be.
No, you're right, no, it shouldn't be in here.
That should be something that we collectively start thinking about to bring to phase two, I think.
That's right, because we hope, because we want the information to be able to tell us.
We could be wasting money, we could be wasting resources on things that are necessary. I mean, as far as the overlap, and where can we make those departments more efficient? And then what do we need to do to respond to the future needs?
Yeah, you know, the other thing too is, I keep hearing from people all the time, gee, tell me, when I talk about the Citadel Discount Program to people, oh, you know, well, what does the county really do? And then I end up in this long discussion about all of the services at county, and people are always surprised at a lot of them. And I think this will help in that whole educational process too, of what county government is for the people.
All right, so I will edit this then, or give them our feedback on it.
It sounds like maybe we are, so I think we're pretty good in this part. What do we got and how is it put together? It sounds like we're maybe a little bit struggling with, what's the next step? Maybe we want to, Mark.
I think that, I'm very concerned with putting a data gathering piece and then suggesting.
Where are we going?
I think the first step is to get the data, because I think that's what we talked about.
Absolutely.
And to suggest that you're asking him not only to get the data, but make a recommendation that comes out of it.
No, 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 you're jumping ahead. I'm asking Mark to maybe recommend what we do as the next step in terms of accomplishing kind of increased efficiency, planning for the future development of new regional programs. Because it sounds like we're kind of struggling with the phase two of this a little bit.
Well, but I think we can discuss that with him as we go forward, or with whoever it is we choose to do this.
See, I don't think we should jump ahead yet. I think we should let him get the information and let us have it. Then let us use our own creativity as a group to look at what we need to do next.
You can always bring him back for the piece that you're suggesting, Mark. Because I do think that we need, otherwise no farmer.
Again, based upon.
Well, that's what I meant, I'm a little.
It's all about being confident in the information that you have and use that as a basis of making a judgment as to what we do. But the first step is to have some confidence in the information, and I think that's what you're looking for. And I believe that, you know, with the addition of that, let's say, the service availability and the, you know, suggestion that there could be a potential integration of services based upon what he sees, would be the piece of information I think would be useful as a beginning. And at that point, I think we should make a judgment as to what the next step would be when we got to the application of what we found out.
We all have our own ideas about where we think this could go, but in order to come together, and for us to have a consensus on that, we have to have the information. That's really the key piece.
And of course, you know, I start with the premise that this is a taxpayer-funded service organization, and that if we're in the business of supplying services that are funded by, you know, by tax money, we have to make sure that those services are what, you know, or what the taxpayers think that they're paying for.
Maggie, don't you think that this represents the conversation that we wanted to know?
And it's pretty standard.
Yeah, it's pretty standard, pretty simple.
With that one addition.
What I would ask, if you're okay with, our next steps are quotes, the procurements, and then letting department heads know, as part of narrowing down his budget, will be, department heads, can you identify who you would like to speak with? Because he, you know, for example, I'll speak with Mark, but I would like Mark to speak with Kevin Galligan for the details on the energy efficiency stuff. Likewise, Paul may say, speak with me, but he may have internally him speak with three other people. And I think that's why we have a range in pricing. He's waiting to see the extent and the exposure.
And maybe if you could give us a map. I probably have one, but a copy of the org chart?
Did I do that?
You may have, I'm sure you probably did. It's, is it on the website though?
Well, it's pretty old, it's a legal.
No, I think.
No, I have an internal org chart, which I, maybe I'm losing my marbles, which is entirely possible.
Well, I've identified at least 24 different services. I've identified, you know, at least 24 different services and applications that we have.
There's that many, a cooperative extension.
But I'm talking about things that, that when I speak to people, these are things that, you know, they come up in terms of, you know, in terms of things of valuable value. At the same time, if you're doing an operational audit, he needs to talk to the people who are operating and then get some sense as to what they think is important, because that depends on.
That's what Maggie's talking about. What we'll do now is go to the department head and say, besides yourself, who else?
That will define the scope and price, that's why he's got a range.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I can do that also in the email, I'll get the org chart.
So then, since this is not a deliberation, we'll bring that back to you for your approval.
So do you need some sort of support from us at this point?
It's not a deliberation.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
The only, I have two other things. Next week, just so you know, I will be doing a new $10 million budget supplemental for the Septic Betterment Program. They're going through that pretty good. It probably had a close to $5 million a year clip now, so we will be preparing that, design it, and we can bring it over to the Assembly for their submission. And then I did get a thing from the Center for Coastal Studies, and this is on the, last year we made a donation to the boater's guide, if you remember. So I was wondering if you guys wanted to do that this year. I think last year we did $1,000.
This is to?
So Rich Delaney, it's Center for Coastal Studies, and John Papalaro, Cape Guard Commercial Hook Fisherman Association. They publish a boater's guide every year, and basically they were taking that little endorsement and paying for us.
And supporting them.
So if you want to do that, I need you to authorize me to do that, yeah.
Do you have to say, yeah, I have no problem. I will move, I will move to.
Second, opposed, say aye. Aye, opposed, negative, opposed.
I just wanted to make a comment that a lot of people who saw that ad in the last one thought it looked kind of like a Russian dude.
I think actually it was the commission that did it for us, I think Nancy Osbell did it.
Yeah, well, I think we need to.
Were we frying the fish?
You know, it looks sort of like Captain, Captain County, Captain County in his menu.
I think Nancy did it for us.
Well, we'll have to take the little rope out of that. We'll have to take the photo of that.
Do you want approval on the ad before it goes in?
Well, I just think it would be, you know, it'd be good to have it looked. Yeah, I think it would be a good thing to see.
Would you like to be in charge of that?
Sure.
Okay, well, I would like-
Not that I have any grand vision in mind, but-
I think it's a great idea for you to look at.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. I certainly will then.
And that's all I have. Actually, oh, I should note, mention that the fire chiefs at their most recent meeting nominated Chief George Russell to serve on the CMed for, so we'll be pulling that together.
And then we'll be putting in our agenda for next week.
Yeah. Well, next week is the AmeriCorps program. But we'll schedule the CMed meeting as a separate entity. We wouldn't do it as part of-
No, it wouldn't be a meeting, but we have to, need to appoint, we can't do it here.
Oh, okay, so to appoint the committee.
Salt Festival, you went last week.
No, I know. I mean, the thrift shop.
I don't know.
Aren't we having a meeting up in Bourne at some point?
Next week.
On the 13th. We are going to be in Bourne. I'm working on a spot. I've called the Elder Services, see if they have a spot in their place. So I'll let you know where that's going to be, but we will meet in Bourne, probably 10 o'clock.
Morning.
And we're going to do the little tour of the thrift shop.
At the county, at the castle?
At the castle.
And next week is the-
Next week is the 6th at 2:00. We're going to do the AmeriCorps.
This is a new group?
Yep.
New group, yep.
Doesn't seem like a year ago.
No, it goes by fast.
All right. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I went to the Workforce Investment Board, and one of the things that come out of that was the renewal of the individual activity. There is money available through the workforce board for people who are looking for support, you know, providing they've been a dislocated worker, looking for support for tuition, for retraining. And it is something that we, since we're in an economy to where people need as much help as they can get to get resettled, they should know that help is available. All they do is get in touch with JTech, and JTech will give them the income guidelines and the criteria with regard to it. And it has opened up because there has been some questions to whether people with, say, baccalaurates, would be eligible for the training. And it turns out that under certain circumstances, you know, they are. So they shouldn't overlook that possibility. The, last night I was at the Family Advisory Committee at Cape Cod Hospital, and they introduced a very interesting program, which I think people should know, need to know more about. At a certain age, there are problems of balance. And the Cape Cod Hospital is trying to reach out to seniors, to work on strategies to avoid falling. It turns out that falling and the outcome from falling is populating a lot of the nursing homes. And it's their feeling that by supporting that, you know, these strategies to avoid that, that that would be very helpful. The, let's see, the coast, I think the community of councilman aging throughout the Cape, meet on a regular basis. He's going to pick this up. And I would recommend to people that they go through their, you know, the Council on Elder Affairs or the Council on Aging to get some more information or call Cape Cod Hospital directly on it. I just think it's a, you know, it's a very important program. I know that my grandmother had fallen and was, as a result of that, was in long-term care because of it. So I think this is a positive thing. I think more people should be aware of it, and it could be very helpful. And the Harwich Housing Authority voted, as we did, to support the no vote on question two. And anecdotally, I was in class over at Harwich High School this week, and one of the kids, one of the juniors, made the comment that he had watched this special on Education on Sunday. I don't know if you've heard about it. And he posed this following question. He says, he wanted to know what we were doing in our communities, in Harwich particularly, to prepare him to face, you know, future challenges in a global economy. And I'm looking at the kid, and he's 16 years old, 15, you know. And I said, are you a major, were you set up to ask this? But the question is very relevant, because I asked him, well, what do you think, you know, what do you think we need? He said, we needed to have some evidence that we were actually going to invest in the programs, you know, in the schools. I said, what does that mean? He said, more money. So I said, oh, that's interesting. So I didn't pursue it with him, you know, as far as where the money should be placed. But I thought it was remarkable. And this isn't the first time that, you know, that I've heard this from kids about when they watch these programs, they actually develop these questions, and they're all better questions than I sometimes hear at town meetings. So I think it should be paid attention to, that it gives me great hope that kids are not only paying attention, but they're, you know, they're concerned about their future and they're asking those questions. So I just wanted to, you know, point that out, because I think it's very hopeful.
And I would like to just talk about something. The Cape Cod Commission is doing a series of information meetings on watersheds and wastewater. And yesterday at the commission, we were given a very quick look at that presentation. And it's quite impressive, and it really does look at a regional solution. I mean, not a regional solution, but the problem in a regional way. And how it could be approached as a regional, with a regional approach. So those meetings are taking place. They had their first meeting in Branstable last week. It is on the website of the Cape Cod Commission. And this is something that really should, I encourage citizens beyond the Boards of Selectment, Planning, Water Commission, Departments of Public Health, to go, you know, beyond the local governments and really to have citizens come into the room and participate in this presentation, you know, to get the full scope of it. It is really very well done and very informative. And I just encourage people to look at it, because it's, in some ways, it takes the boundaries. You know, each town is struggling with this issue. And each town is probably going to be crumbled by this issue. I was just listening today on NPR about a town in, I think it was the Atlantic region, has just filed for bankruptcy trying to deal with this. And they're small towns, the smaller towns that have to deal with their water. So we don't want to have to join that brigade, which is really setting a precedent for municipalities trying to file bankruptcy. And it is very informative and maybe will help bring us together in a more rational way in looking at this as opposed to feeling like we're under, each town is under the obligation to have to come up with a solution.
Are you inviting those folks from East County over there?
Yeah, everybody is invited. And I'm just letting us-
Were you supposed to see those people?
No, they would like to see us eventually. I put a call in. Andy and Brian Hoss are meeting with them hopefully beginning of next week.
Do they know who their representative is on the platform?
Uh, yes, they do.
Perhaps they should meet with them.
Yes, right. Yeah, we'll bring in the group. I just, that group just was-
When are they meeting next?
Who is this group?
All right, he's talking about the group that I met with last week. And that is a whole, that's a private, those are private individuals that we're, I am getting individuals' response to them to clarify things. This I'm just promoting.
What place is the next one?
I don't have that in my hand. You can go on the Cape Cod Commission website for their vegetation, excuse me, for their watershed series. And there's about, well, there's 43 watersheds, and they're determined to do watershed meetings around everyone. So I don't know if that's going to be doable.
Do they have a schedule yet of whether they're made?
Uh, yes, there's a schedule of like for the first six that are done. So the next, yeah, the first six watershed meetings. So they are really, did you go to one of them? Did you attend that by any chance?
I think I did.
Yeah, it's really well done. So very, very informative. So I think it just helps us really look at this whole issue from a historical perspective, what has gotten us here and how can we deal with it in the least, in the most cost-effective way with the biggest impact.
Do they have 43 different presentations, but there must be one kind of overall?
Yeah, there's one overall, but what they do is when they go to a watershed, they focus on that watershed and they kind of bring, you know, they bring it down to that watershed so that they're really helping people. Because, you know, as we all know, the outer Cape is different from the upper Cape. You know, there's more flushing and that sort of thing. But doesn't make the lead, you know, even though it flushes away, doesn't mean that there's not something getting flushed away into the ecosystem. So we can't just ignore it because, you know, it doesn't seem to be directly, you know, building up in those particular areas.
But we should bring them in to maybe give an overview presentation.
Yeah, I do. I mean, it would be well worth everybody's viewing list.
Steve has-
I have accessed the commission's website, and I have their, the list here. The Three Base Forum will be September 23rd at 7:00 P.M.
Well, that's in the past.
Oh, so it is.
Yeah, that's the one that they just had.
Lewis Bay Forum, October 7th, 7:00 P.M.
And that should be quite pricey.
Matickeys Middle School in West Orange.
At Matickeys, okay. And what was the date of that again?
October 7th, 7:00 P.M.
At 7:00 P.M.
And that's the Lewis Bay Forum. The next one is the Bass River Forum on October 21st at 7:00 P.M. At Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School Auditorium. On October 28th is at 7:00 P.M. is the Pompaness at Bay Forum at Mashpee Town Hall. The Herring River Forum, November 18th at 7:00 P.M. at the Harwich Middle School Auditorium.
What date is that?
November 18th, 7:00 P.M. Herring River Forum, and that's at the Harwich Middle School Auditorium. And the Wacoit Bay Forum, November 30th at 7:00 P.M., and that is at the Mashpee Public Library.
Thank you.
And for more information, you can call 508-362-3828.
Thank you.
You know, we have the personal-
Yes, I think that's, if I think of some other jam, I'll bring it up.
We haven't asked public comments. We have a member.
Yes. Now, he's just, he's an observer.
I'll ask a question.
Okay.
Cool. We don't get many of those.
Your agendas for these meetings, do you feel that those are complying with the new open meeting law? Because they remain fairly general on topics.
Yeah, we didn't have anything scheduled today, so I don't think so.
Would you identify yourself just for the record? David Still, Hossfeld Patriot.
Yes, we are very careful that our agendas do comply with the open meeting law. The, today, the agenda that we had was sort of canceled as of Monday. And it was too late, because you have to post them 48 hours in advance. So, but yes, we do, and particularly when we are deliberating anything and if we are going to take a vote on anything. That's why we only discussed the project today for the organizational assessment and didn't, we had nothing to vote on. So we didn't deliberate it. We just had a discussion about it. And that does comply with the open meeting. So, yeah, we're very careful about that.
But we'll be sure, we're sure that you'll keep us on text.
And actually, in that vein, I just noticed today that the new exterior bulletin board was put up. I saw Carol's putting some stuff in it. Unfortunately, it's not big enough, so we're going to have to get a bigger one. But that's right available at the top, actually, on the first landing of the handicap ramp.
Maybe we should put our pictures in there.
We could do that, get a bigger one than that, too.
Oh, you can just write the smaller.
The guy at the Attorney General's office, who was originally assigned to do this, has now been reassigned. So we don't, so he came into, you know, the MMA meeting, you know, where he went, you know, I want to be helpful. Of course, I never did this before, and I want to be helpful, and, you know, we're going to get, we're going to work all this through and go over it all together. And so we were supposed to have this as an agenda item at, you know, at the Municipal Regional Affairs Meeting. He didn't show up. They said, well, what happened to him? Well, he got another job, and it's now casting around, so who's going to, you know, who's going to run it? So it is definitely a work.
Do we?
To have a mayor, he's not doing it.
All we have left is our summary needs. I have a couple of things I wanted to mention. I attended the Human Services meeting last week, only because I hadn't been there a long time. And V.L. Hathaway gave us from Tricor, she gave us the Oral Health 2013 Plan, just so we have our own copy of it.
Thank you.
And while we're talking about wastewater, we're talking about financing, and the Cape Cod Commission is rolling out this watershed. We signed a contract, I think, a couple of weeks ago for the collaborative to, to contract with someone to help them look at ways in which the county, through the collaborative, can help towns begin to finance these wastewater projects going into the future. Because they are extremely costly. And I think when we get that, when we get that back, and we should find out exactly how long they think it's going to take, that we can look at that and look at ways of how the county can participate in some of this as well. What options we have as a county to, to maybe provide, not to provide the financial resources, but see how we can-
Really create a template that would be, suggest how they could approach it.
Yeah, exactly. That's what we want.
Yeah, I thought that's what we signed.
We did. We signed that.
And they're actively pursuing it.
So that's all I have.
I'd like to move the needs action.
I second.
I oppose. None. In favor, motion carries.
Can I just add, Madam Chairman, to your Human Services meeting, you were there.
Yeah, you were there too.
Because we did the rollout for the Dental Discount Program, and hopefully that was well received there. And also I'll mention that Corporate Extension was there going through some of their nutrition programs. So I think that was very well received as well.
Very well received. That's a, you know, really, when you think about it, the county offers so many valuable services to people on Cape Cod. And going to the various meetings, you really hear and understand what's going on, particularly through the extension service. It's a lot to take into account.
Well, there was a, for what it's worth, there was a blog that came out of Flint County that said that Cape Cod County Government remains popular with its resources.
Good.
I was glad you could have you post that, though.
Yeah, keep under Cape Cod.
Branstableville.
Yeah, Branstable.
Maggie, do you have?
I have no report.
No reports today. Okay, marching to the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.